Good evening, everybody, and welcome to tonight's Ordinary Council meeting. My name is Lucy Cindera Congreve and I am the Mayor of Brimbank. I declare this meeting open at 7pm. In the unlikely event of an emergency, please follow the direction of council offices and the emergency procedures on the wall near the door. I would like to note that I have given approval from the journalists from the Brimbank Star Weekly and for Channel 31 to audio and video record the meeting. Members of the gallery are not intended to be recorded, but please notify council officer should you have any concerns. I would also like to welcome the independent Chair of our Audit and Risk Management Committee, Mr Jeff Harry. Welcome. We will invite Jeff to address council shortly. On behalf of council, we are very, very glad to see you here tonight. So can I please ask everyone to stand for item number one, which is the acknowledgement of country? On behalf of the Brimbank City Council, I would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land, the Warrenjirri people, and to pay our respects to elders past and present. Please be seated. Councilors, please remain standing for the council commitment. As the council, we will act in the best interests of the Brimbank community and consider the immediate and long-term impacts of our decisions. We will make these decisions fairly and without bias. We will uphold all of our obligations under the laws of Victoria and council's local laws and will act in accordance with our code of conduct. Thank you, councillors, please be seated. Okay, we're moving on to item three of the agenda, which is apologies and leave of absence. And I do note that councillor Tarkos has submitted an apology for this evening's meeting. Moving on to item number four, which is disclosure of conflicts of interest. Councilors, are there any conflicts of interest this evening? No, there are no conflicts of interest. So we will move on to item number five, which is the designation of items as confidential. And there are two items to be designated as confidential this evening. May I have a mover of a motion to designate these items as confidential? Moved by councillor Judit Chair as per the business papers, seconded by councillor Papafotio. I will put that to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we're now moving on to item number six, which is the confirmation of minutes of previous meetings. Is there a mover of a motion to confirm the minutes from the previous meetings? Moved councillor Borg? Remember your microphone. Thanks councillor Borg. So councillor Borg, moving as per the papers, seconded by councillor Judit Chair. And I'll put that to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Thank you. Okay, now we move on to condolences. Now, there are no formal condolences this evening, however, I do wish to acknowledge the recent passing of Ron Dorr. So on behalf of Brimbank City Council, I'd like to extend our condolences to the family and friends of Ron Dorr. Ron has been a volunteer in the community for over three decades, including as the president of the St Albans Historical Society, national president of the Australian Video Producers Association, media and events coordinator for Bully Zero, president of the Gallonbury Residents' Association, vice president of the Melbourne Magic Festival, fundraiser for the MS Society and many other community-oriented roles. Ron was involved in the restoration of the Sunshine Harvester as a founding member of the Friends of the Black Powder Mill. He was instrumental in the campaign to nominate the Black Powder Mill for heritage listing. His dedication to volunteering and passion for the local community will be sorely missed. So there is no official item on here as a condolence motion, but councillors, does anyone that would like to say any words in relation to Ron? I know that some of you knew him personally. Councillor David?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, indeed. And I and councillor Judit Chair, we knew Ron very well, Ron very well in the past. And we remember well when he was lobbying us every day of the week in reference to Black Powder Mill. And at that time, just before the demolition of many other mills out there currently area, we rushed to save the Powder Mill today, the Black Powder Mill, which I think is creating a great atmosphere for young and all. And indeed, Ron, I found him at always, and as I said, I knew him for a long time. A true gentleman and a great volunteer, one of those people that never said no to anyone. And it's greatly lost. St Albans Football Cup, and I'd like to say congratulations to them. I think it was just recently, just before he went really sick, they put a fundraising afternoon for him. And the park was full of people, friends of Ron. And he was all smiles, spoke to one and all. Yeah, St Albans was good enough to make him feel excellent that day. And I would remember Ron for as long as I live. God bless him. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you councillor David. Councillor Judit Chair, do you want to?
Yes, thanks. Just to follow on with councillor David as well. We attended the fundraising event last year and it has to be a very special man that comes along to a fundraising event for someone who's just been diagnosed with a terminal illness. So he was smiling, cracking jokes with everybody, recognising everybody, eating with everybody. It was a major event. I don't remember anything like that in my lifetime for someone who attends a fundraising event, just being diagnosed with a terminal illness that you know you are not going to be able to beat. So apart from all the other things that he had done, but he was a true gentleman, as councillor David said, and a very, very honourable man. He will be very majorly missed. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Judit Chair. Okay, we're going to move on to item number eight of the agenda, which is congratulations. And we do have one item of congratulations this evening. So may I have a mover of a motion to congratulate Viv Nguyen? Councillor Fam?
I would like to move the motion that councillor write to Viv Nguyen congratulating her on her appointment as Chair of the Victorian Multicultural Commission.
Thank you councillor Fam. Is there a second after this item? Councillors, councillor Trung seconding? And councillor Fam, would you like to say any words?
Thanks. Council wishes to congratulate Viv Nguyen on her appointment as Chair of the Victorian Multicultural Commission. Miss Nguyen is the President of the Vietnamese Community in Australia Victorian Chapter and a passionate advocate for our local community. Miss Nguyen have worked within the community to support the transition to the National Disability Insurance Scheme. She has also worked with the local African community to promote social cohesion and participation. Brimbank supports Miss Nguyen in her continued work to make Victoria and Brimbank a place where everyone can be participate equally, regardless of their background, ethnic or identity.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Fam. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Councillor Shaun, would you like to speak to this item? As a seconder?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I just would like to congratulate on Viv Nguyen. It's a lot of members in community or a different ethnic community. It's known Miss Nguyen is very well. She's been getting involved for a lot of community in around Victoria is more than 30 years. And we believe it's now she being nominated to become Chair for the multicultural. It's more change for her and she will be understand a lot of need and what it from the ethnic community. So it's the best for her on the disposition. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Trung. Any further words on the congratulations motion? No, I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we also have another late addition to our congratulations. And I understand that councillor Trung would like to congratulate the award winners of the Keep Victoria Beautiful Awards. Councillor Trung, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, last Friday, I attend to the Keep Victoria Beautiful Sustainable City Award. This award is recognised and celebrated a community action to protect and enhance our local environment. Council and Brimbank community were nominated for Fire Award category, first environmental sustainability for the Sunwell Community Park, and another one for community government partnership for the Sibling for School Project, a partnership between council, the Dham Fireless Port Women's Centre and other 34 Brimbank school. Little Revenant, the Sunshine Business Association and Friends of Corroy Street for the stroke shock in Sunshine campaign, and Asleep School, Deep Park North Family School for their sustainability initiative. The Dham Fireless Award, Jessica Jeter from Friends of Corroy Street. I am very happy to announce that Sunwell Community Park and the Sibling for the School Project received the Highly Recommended Award. I wish to acknowledge especially for the staff from the sustainability and the community member who have working very hard for this fantastic project and encourage for more member in our community awareness about environment issue for our community. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Trung. It's certainly very encouraging for us to have five award nominees. So we're really, really pleased with that. So congratulations to our staff and all of the community who are involved in that project. So we're now moving on to item number nine, which is public question time. And Miss Blair, I understand that we have some questions from the public this evening.
Yes, Chair. The first question is from Miss Sawa. Is Miss Sawa in attendance this evening? No, I don't believe so.
Okay, we'll take that question on notice and formally respond.
So we'll respond to that question in writing. The second question is from Mr Carbonari. Is Mr Carbonari here this evening? Okay, so we'll take that question on notice and respond in writing as well. The third question is from Mr Wilson. And Mr Wilson's in attendance? Yes. So the question is, subsequent to August 20 council meeting, I received a letter dated August 23rd stating that as part of the ongoing investigation into my complaint about a barking dog in my street, other residents will be canvassed regarding the claims made by you. On Sunday, the 15th of September, I visited every house in Harcourt Avenue from 1 up to 15. Since I was far and away the first house to be built in the street in 1974, I'm in a first-name friendship with all 15 households I visited. In every home I visited, I spoke to a responsible adult resident, and without exception, they all denied having had a visit from a council member. My question therefore is why have council officers not made some effort to assist me in my quest for this dog to be silenced or removed? Nothing has changed since the last council meeting, when I was suppressed from venting my frustration at not being able to sleep or live a normal social life due to the dog's barking. As I attempted to say to council on August 20th, this dog was bred, raised and purchased for the sole purpose of guarding a mostly uninhabited house.
Thank you, Mr Wilson, for your question this month. And I am advised that in the process of investigating your complaints regarding nuisance barking, council animal management officers have spoken with neighbouring properties. I'm also advised that council officers have made concerted efforts to assist you through the investigation into the claims of nuisance barking levels. Based on all evidence received during the investigation, which including barking dog logs submitted by you, discussions with the other residents and the observations of investigating officers during the site visits, council has been unable to substantiate the allegations of nuisance barking to the high evidentiary level that further action in the magistrate court requires. These findings and outcomes were communicated to you in a phone call from animal management officers on the 4th of September 2019. I understand that maintenance works required by council were carried out by the owner of the dog during the investigation and council officers were satisfied with these works. Thank you.
The second, the last two questions are from Mr Ramsay, who I understand is in attendance this evening? Yes, there it is. The first question is, was the land currently occupied by the Italian Club originally zoned as parkland for the people of Sunshine North? And if so, has any land ever been set aside as a replacement?
Thank you, Mr Ramsay, and thank you for your emails during the week as well. I apologise as I responded to some of those today. But we weren't able to find any information whether the land was formally zoned for public open space, given the timeframe provided to respond to this question. But we will continue to investigate and provide a written response to you very soon in relation to that question.
The second question is, is the peppercorn lease arrangement of $1 per annum for 100 years still in effect on the land occupied by the Italian Club site?
So the answer to that question is that the land is no longer owned by council and therefore council does not have any lease arrangements on that land. That land has been sold. So I will provide further information to you on that shortly. Is that the end of questions? Fantastic. Okay, so we're now moving on to item number 10 of the agenda this evening, which is petitions. And there are no petitions to be tabled this evening, so we'll move straight on to item number 11, which is minutes and reports of special committees. And there are no minutes or reports from special committees. So we move on to item number 12, which is officer reports. Now, there are 10 officer reports by consideration for council tonight, and the first one is our governance report of September 2019. But before we reconsider that report, I would like to invite Mr Jeff Harry, who is the Chair of our Audit and Risk Management Committee, to address the council and provide an update on behalf of the committee. So welcome Jeff. Come forward.
Okay. You got me? Thanks, Madam Mayor and councillors, for inviting me to talk to you this evening. This is obviously the first time I've done this as the new Chair of the committee. But no doubt, Michael Beer has stood here for several years and talked to you as I'm about to. I probably should just note that some of the things I'm going to mention, and certainly some of the things that are in the annual report inclusion that the committee has provided, were items that occurred before I was a member of the audit committee. There's nothing about, there's no conclusions you should draw from that, other than the fact that there are some things that have happened before I was Chair, became Chair early in the year. My first meeting was in February. So let me first say that I've been very happy to be appointed as the Chair of the committee. And we've now had three meetings that I've chaired and I've enjoyed every one of them. And I feel that we will be able to do things better as I get my feet properly on the ground. But to date, I think we've had a pretty good start. I think you'd all be aware of the Charter of the Audit Committee, Audit and Risk Management Committee, I should say, and what that requires, what you've set in that Charter for the committee to do. And obviously, as Chair of the committee, I'm vitally concerned to make sure that we address all of those requirements and responsibilities in the Charter. But above all of that, that we're adding value to council and helping you to deal with some rather challenging technical matters, some of which I think are on the agenda tonight, just in terms of dealing with financial statements and the like. The Charter of the committee was changed and you approved that last year. And in fact, the committee has recently considered further changes, which I think may come to you in the near future. So I'm referring to the annual report that we provided to council, which will go in the annual report. And I note that the attendance at meetings by all members, independent and councillor members, has been really good. In fact, you'd almost say it's better than 100% because we've had one or two members, one or two councillors, I should say, who have attended, even though they're not members. I would just take a moment to say, we're always happy to see council as attend audit committee meetings. Some people think that they're to be avoided. And some people think that they find more out attending audit committee meetings than they expect to. So the door is always open and we'd be welcome to have any councillor attend. During the year, there's been a fairly active internal audit programme. And that work has been completed, I think, well. The challenge has been with a change in the internal audit service provider during the year that you do lose some momentum in the work. And so it was very pleasing to see that all of that work has been done, all of the reviews were concluded and all of the results were reported to the committee. Just referring then to the involvement of Vago, Victorian Auditor General, in our external audit. An agent is appointed here that does that work for Vago. And they have concluded their work. In the year that we're talking about, which is the annual financial report for last year, not the one you'll see tonight, I should just comment that the auditor's opinion was a clean opinion. It expressed confidence in the financial report and in the annual performance report. That may sound like a rather unexciting comment, but let me tell you that I sit on a number of audit committees and the discussions with auditors are not always about clean audit opinions. So it is something to be achieved. And the officers involved, working with Shane, should be congratulated on what was a great result. I've referred to the fact that internal audit was changed during the year. There's a new contractor, they've settled in well and they're delivering their work acceptably. I think we've reported, as we should, to council as required by the Charter. And in fact, the report I'm referring to tonight is evidence of that. In terms of the annual review of the Charter, that was carried out and concluded satisfactorily. And I think all members of the committee at the time were very happy with what was put forward and pleased that council approved those changes. I will make one observation there, and that is that since I've been Chair, we've established an annual work plan for the audit committee, which effectively represents what our responsibilities are. So each meeting, we check off against that to make sure that we're doing everything that we should do and that we don't get to the end of the year and have a nasty surprise. As I said, I joined the committee in February and I must say that the support I've received as a new member and as Chair has been excellent and I couldn't have wished for it to be any better. So I'd like to thank the officers involved in supporting me. It's been very much appreciated. Look, I just make one or two observations. In my first year as Chair, it's not in the report, but it might be information that councillors may be interested in. I sit on several audit committees, so I do see things being done in different ways. I think we have a very well organised and supported audit committee here at Brimbank. I think our agendas are well structured and I think that the quality of reports that comes to us is excellent as well. The one thing that we have noticed in recent times is the growing number of reports that come from integrity-based bodies across the state, IBAC, Vago itself with its performance reporting, the Ombudsman and also the Victorian Inspector. The audit committee sees reports from those organisations every meeting and the number grows. So it adds pressure to not just the committee, but the officers in dealing with what comes out of all of those. I think we'll see that as a continuing trend in the future, as more and more of those reports hit the deck. Look, I think that's all I need to say. And I thank you for your time, Madam Mayor and councillors. Be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Jeff. We weren't going to do questions, but councillors, do you have any questions for Jeff? Without notice?
Happy not to take questions.
Thank you so much, Jeff. It was very much appreciated and thank you for your insights.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Okay, so councillors, we're going to now move on to considering report 12.1, which is the governance report for September 2019. So I will invite Mr Hogan to briefly outline the report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The monthly governance report is a standing item within the council agenda. It is a summary of recent governance activity in accordance with best practice and good governance principles and in compliance with the Local Government Act 1989. There are a number of items which require council consideration contained within the officer recommendation, including a number of parts, amongst them, the appointment of councillors to the Brimbank Youth Council. Of course, it also contains recommendations arising from the Audit and Risk Management Committee under the capable stewardship of Mr Harry.
Thank you, Mr Hogan. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this report? No, is there a mover of the report, of the item? Councillor Judit Chair?
So moved, Madam Mayor. And at part C8, rather, appoints councillor Arne as co-chair and councillor Borg as member of the Brimbank Youth Council from the 17th of September 2019, until council resolves otherwise, and the rest as printed in the business papers.
Thank you, councillor Judit Chair. Is there a seconder for this item? Councillor Haddich? And with the mover, I'd like to speak. Councillor Judit Chair?
Madam Mayor, it's a big, jam-packed governance report this month. Thank you to Mr Hogan and Esther for putting it all together, because there's a lot there to take in, including the Draft Audit and Risk Management Committee Charter 2019, the Audit and Risk Management Committee Annual Report 2018/19, to which Mr Harry has given us a glowing report, the Draft Brimbank Youth Council Terms of Reference. It's a new thing that we're doing here with the youth council. And I do wish the two councillors that are going on this committee all the best. We worked with the youth council last year, I worked with them myself actually as the mayor. They are an amazing bunch of people and I'm sure that will do good things for this municipality. There's also the Draft Municipal Association of Victoria State Council motions, four significant motions for this council. Hopefully, they will get up at the MAV conference later on next month. And there's also a memorandum of understanding between the Melbourne Airport and Brimbank City Council, which you signed, Madam Mayor, a couple of months ago. Councillor Tarkos and I, and also councillor Papafotio, I think. And councillor Tarkos, we're also there with you on the day. A significant milestone for this council as well, to have an MOU with the airport, which is in neighbouring council, but many of the benefits flow on to Brimbank. And of course, the draft Conduct During Elections Policy 2019. I cannot believe that this is in here already. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Judit Chair. With the second, I'd like to speak. Councillor Haddich?
I'd also like to acknowledge what councillor Goodrich said. It's a really big governance report and it shows the importance of good governance. We do at Brimbank Council have a very good governance team and the work that's come forward tonight is evidence of that. I also just wanted to make one minor correction. In the list, it mentions on the 6th of September, there was a meeting with representatives of Daniel Molino and Natalie Suliman at the Alvin and Brimbank Toy Library. I was also there. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Haddich. Councillors, any further discussion on the governance report? Councillor Borg?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say a few words with regards to the Brimbank Youth Council Terms of Reference. In April 2018, the Brimbank Young Citizens Jury recommended the establishment of Brimbank Youth Council to provide a formal mechanism for communication with Brimbank Council. Involving young people in decision-making is highly important. It not only empowers them, but it also gives them the opportunity to have a voice in matters that relate to them. As a councillor for the people portfolio, it gives me great pleasure to see the Draft Brimbank Youth Council Terms of Reference come to council for endorsement. I am very much looking forward to working, or rather, to be part of this youth council. I would also like to say a few words about the Brimbank Collective Action Committee. At the last meeting, council has endorsed the name Impact Brimbank. And this time, the committee is also seeking our help. I invite councillor Papa Fort, who may want to add some more information, or you can't. Okay, I'm happy to do that. The work is of great interest to the committee. Council had over 50 written expressions of interest in February 2019. We have now been working for over seven months with committed members of the community who are keen to work with us over the long term to address health and social issues. The committee, as I already mentioned, selected the name Impact Brimbank for our future programme of work and is now in the process of developing a logo and a story that will explain to the community how we are going about this work. We are planning an event in November to present our early work to the community and ask for their input. We want to know what matters to the community and what they want to work with. We want to know what matters to the community and what they want to work with us to change. We are developing a conversation tool, a series of open-ended questions to encourage all community.
Do you need some more time?
Just a minute, if I may, okay? Um, we are developing a conversation tool, a series of open-ended questions to encourage all community members to be part of this conversation. Uh, we expect that the Impact Brimbank will become a separate entity in future with its own story. It will need a website to support the programme and as a platform to communicate with the community. This will be separate from council's, um, website. Council can assist Impact Brimbank with this forward planning by securing the domain name impactbrimbank.org.au for future use so that we are prepared when the time comes for Impact Brimbank to set up an independent website. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Borg. Councillors, any further discussion on the governance report? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Thank you. Okay, we're now moving on to report twelve point two, which is the Financial Statements two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen and Performance Statement of eighteen nineteen. And I'll introduce Mr Ma to introduce the report, please. Mr Ma.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, this report is presented to council for consideration of the in-principle approval of the two thousand and eighteen, nineteen financial statements and the performance statements, prior to these being forwarded to the Victorian Auditor General's office. The report also recommends that councillor Headitch and councillor Goodish certify the final version of the statements prior to being forward. The statements have been cleared by our auditors and the Audit and Risk Management Committee have recommended that a council, that have recommended that council approves their statements in principle. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Ma. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification? Question, councillor Headitch?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Uh, my question relates to a, uh, point that's made on page fifteen, uh, where it looks at the risk assessment of financial sustainability indicators. And my questions for the C E O, uh, if the sentence says these results will, will, results will place council over all financial sustainability in the low-risk category. Uh, this is a question that I continually ask, but I will keep asking it. Uh, does the C E O think going forward that this is too conservative as a risk grading for a community with such high needs?
Thank you. I'll ask the C E O to respond to them.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, I think the most councils will recall that prior to the establishment of the last budget, we actually had a conversation with the councils about their risk appetite. And the councillors at that time indicated that their risk appetite was, their preference was to remain low and then maybe move up into a higher category with our borrowings, which we are at a medium level at this stage. From our point of view, we would make a recommendation to the council. So ultimately, up to the council to rec, to make a decision as to what, um, risk, level of risk that they're comfortable with. Um, from our point of view, we would probably err on the side of a low risk.
Thank you, Madam C E O. Are there any further questions or points of clarification in relation to this report? No? Is there a motion, councillors, this item? Move to councillor Fan?
You've said it's printed on the paper. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Fan. And seconded, I saw a hand over here, councillor Allen. Councillor Fan, would you like to speak to this item? No? Councillor Allen, would you like to discuss? No? Is there any further discussion on this item, councillors?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Just simply to say, Madam Mayor, happy to sign off on these reports, especially since after Mr Harry's address this evening. But also especially after it's come to the, um, Audit Committee on the sixth of September and those financial statements were really gone through with a fine-tooth comb. So I'm happy to commend this report to council.
Thank you, Councillor Judy Chair. Is there any further discussion on the financial statements? No? Okay, I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we're now moving on to report twelve point three, which is Application Torment Planning Permit P six nine nine dash two thousand and seventeen at three three two Duke Street and thirty A River View Link Sunshine North. And I will ask Mr Walsh to please introduce this report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The purpose of this report is to provide council with an assessment of the amendments sought to the planning permit uh, for the construction of two hundred and eighty-eight dwellings at the address you've identified. And this is, this assessment is against the provisions of the Brimbank Planning Scheme. Uh, the original permit was issued by council in May two thousand and eighteen. Uh, the current proposal seeks an amendment to the planning permit and the endorsed plans to construct an additional twenty-two dwellings. Uh, this would bring the overall development to two hundred and eighty-eight dwellings. Uh, the officer recommendation in the report is that council issues the amended planning permit uh, subject to the payment conditions set out in attachment five.
Thank you, Mr Walsh. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Is there a motion, councillors? Councillor Lancashire?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move the officer's recommendation.
Thank you, Councillor Lancashire. Uh, is there a seconder for this item? Councillor Headitch? And with the move, I'd like to speak to the item.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just briefly to say that of those twenty-two additional dwellings, uh, nineteen of these dwellings are within what's referred to as a superlot area, uh, with another three being at the ends of rows of dwellings uh, that were previously approved, bringing it of course as referred to two hundred and eighty-eight dwellings. As well as the additional twenty-two dwellings, the amended plans also seek to reduce two communal open space areas located within the development and adjacent to the Maryborough Long River, along with some other minor changes to the internal design details. Uh, this has obviously been given a good consideration by our council planners and have come up with a, a recommendation to approve. Um, I, I consider that to be, um, quite a reasonable position. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councillor Lancashire. Councillor Headitch, as a seconder, would you like to speak to this item? No? Is there any further discussion on this item, councillors? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we are now up to item twelve point four, which is Planning, Activity Update and Delegate Decisions of August two thousand and nineteen. And Mr Walsh, may you please introduce this report to council?
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. Uh, the purpose of this report, uh, is to provide council with the status of planning permit applications and trends in planning approvals in Brimbank. And also to outline decisions made under delegated authority during the month of August regarding planning permit applications and other matters. Uh, council is asked to note the planning, activity, update and delegate decisions for August, uh, twenty nineteen and the delegated planning permit decisions as outlined at attachment one.
Thank you, Mr Walsh. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Is there a mover of, of the, of a motion? Councillor Lancashire?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Uh, move the officer's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a seconder for this item? Councillor Headitch? And with the move, I'd like to speak. Councillor Lancashire?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Very briefly, uh, just to, uh, I do note the cost of development for, uh, the last month is ninety uh, million dollars, uh, versus for the same period last year of forty-six. Um, I had some concerns over the previous few months where the figures were low and one should not be put too much emphasis on month-to-month figures. However, it is certainly nice to see a doubling in the figures, which shows possibly some strength returning to our local economy and building activities. So this is very good news, very good to see. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Lancashire. Councillor, uh, Headitch, as a seconder, would you like to speak?
Just briefly again, uh, I guess, uh, great figures. Uh, I looked at the bottom of the report that's attached to the, uh, the main report and I saw a figure of a hundred and fifty million and a couple of projects in there, a sixty million dollar data centre project in Deramet and another thirty-two odd million uh, extension to a, uh, a major facility in Deramet as well. So I guess, um, those sort of numbers and the overall numbers, uh, to me are very encouraging. We need to keep our eye on things and, uh, do all we can to attract, uh, business and activity to the area. But, uh, thank the officers for the report and thank them for all the work they do when keeping things ticking over as they are in Brimbank.
Thank you, councillor Headitch. Councillors, any further discussion on this item? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we're now moving on to report twelve point five, which is Councillor Portfolio's Quarterly Report, June to August two thousand and nineteen. And I will ask Mr Hogan to introduce this report, please.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. Council is asked to note an update on the key activities of the councillor portfolio assistant during the reporting period, June to August two thousand and nineteen. While strictly speaking, the meeting fell outside of the reporting period, I do advise that the healthy Brimbank portfolio meeting identified on page twenty-four of the report was in fact held on the tenth of September as forecast. The agenda items included disability actions, metro access programme update, Brimbank physical activities strategy update, indoor studies, sorry, indoor stadiums feasibility study and proposal to develop the new safety strategy and engagement process.
Thank you, Mr Hogan. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to the portfolio report? No? Is there a mover of a motion? Councillor Borg?
I'll move the motion as per business papers.
Thank you, Councillor Borg. Is there a seconder for this item? Councillor David? And councillor Borg, would you like to say a few words on this item?
I do, Madam Mayor. Um, I would like to give a bit of a brief regarding the People Portfolio. And, um, there are two particular items that, um, uh, perhaps I need to highlight. And one is the Commonwealth Home Support Programme and the transition, uh, that is taking place at the moment. At the ordinary council meeting held on the nineteenth of June, uh, two thousand and eighteen, council, um, decided to exit core, um, Commonwealth Health Support Programs Services from July the first two thousand and twenty. Uh, the decision will mean that council will no longer deliver core, um, Commonwealth Home Support Program Services, domestic assistance, personal care and respite care. Con, uh, council will continue to deliver other services, including delivered meals, social support programs, carrier support and home maintenance. Uh, council will also continue to provide assessment services as a regional assessment services outlet. Council is negotiating with the Commonwealth Government about the process and schedule of the Commonwealth, um, Home Support Program Services exit. And finally, council has also committed to invest funds up to, um, into the Brimbank Age Friendly City Plan two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and twenty-two to improve engagement of older people in the community. I would also like to talk a little bit about the library feasibility study. The Community Service and Services and Infrastructure, um, Plan two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and thirty-eight has identified the need to redevelop the St Albans and Deer Park libraries. These libraries are expected to transform the local neighbourhood and become catalysts for social integration and community service development. The Brimbank Library Network feasibility study has been conducted by M G S architects. The study identified library trends which demonstrate international and local best uh, practice research. Um, it also looked at, um, general uses and programs at various times during the day. And it also looked at community demographics and forecast changes. Using a selection criteria, the feasibility study identified seven possible sites for the St Albans Library and another seven possible sites for the Deer Park Library. The, uh, study also proposed a community consultation with the, uh, which has already been completed. Uh, the, at the council meeting on the eighteenth of February two thousand and twenty, the feasibility study will be presented for approval for further consultations with the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Borg. With the second, I'd like to speak. Councillor David?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And indeed, in the month of, uh, July, uh, the connected Brimbank portfolio heard about the Western Melbourne Integrations Transport Framework, an update of the Brimbank transfer modelling and the status of the implementation of Brimbank cycle walking strategy. Since strategy was, since the strategy was adopted in two thousand and eight, council has spent eighteen point six million dollars on cycling infrastructure. They completed some thirty point five kilometres of all road share used paths, completed two twenty-two point sixty, sixty-five kilometres on road paths. And since two thousand and sixteen, when this new council came into into, um, into the election in two thousand and sixteen, they completed five new walking circuit paths in parks, twenty fitness stations in ten parks, locations along existing circle paths and share paths, four new full-size basketball courts, numerous basketball key, football, soccer combo, gold pass, post. And this work has been evenly distributed across the municipality, Madam Mayor. It was interesting to see the location maps which clearly show the spread of circle paths and equipment throughout our parks and green spaces. Extensive tree planting has been undertaken along cycle walking paths to reduce heat impact as well as increasing the look and feel of the paths. A lot of work has been done to ensure paths, paths create new connections for residents and parks users and to link up existing path networks. And of course, we've got upcoming projects such, such as Hampshire Road Cycle, uh, Cycle Lanes Stages Three and Four, East West Connection linking St Albans Road, M eighty-trail Victoria, University and Station Road, currently drive and three kilometre fitness circuit and activity pressing, pressing at Lakes Reserve. Madam Mayor, I commend this report to the council. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor David. Councillors, any further discussion on the Portfolio's report? No? I'll put that to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we're now moving on to report twelve point six, which is the Submission to the Better Apartments in Neighborhoods Discussion Paper. I'll invite Mr Walsh to introduce this item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, the report presents to council for consideration its draft submission on the Better Apartments in Neighborhoods Discussion Paper twenty nineteen. Um, as way of background, uh, the discussion paper was released by the Department of Land, Environment, Land Water and Planning on the sixth of August of this year uh, for public comment with submissions due by five P M on the twenty-seventh of Sep, of September. The discussion paper outlines proposed changes to the Better Apartments Design Standards and the Apartment Design Guidelines for Victoria, uh, by addressing five key areas as outlined in the report. Council is asked to endorse the draft submission to the discussion paper, uh, which is at attachment one, and if endorsed, submit the submission to the department by the twenty-seventh of September.
Thank you, Mr Walsh. Uh, councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Is there a motion, councillors? Councillor Lancashire?
Through you, through you, Madam Mayor. I, uh, move the officer's recommendation.
Thank you. And is there a seconder on this item? Seconded by councillor Allen. And with the move, I'd like to speak to this item. Councillor Lancashire?
Yes, I would, thank you. Uh, Madam Mayor, the, um, the changes outlined in the Better Apartments in Neighborhoods Discussion Papers seek to add additional guidelines and considerations for the assessment of planning applications for apartment developments, primarily relating to their external appearance and amenity impacts. The proposed changes include clarify landscaping objectives and standards to prefer canopy trees, require all apartment developments to include landscaped communal open space, encourage landscaping and street frontages, clarify landscaping objectives to support the area's landscaping value. Um, the proposed changes are also in accordance with council's urban forest strategy. The proposed changes are primarily positive and will assist in improving the external, um, external, um, of apartment developments, the external appearance of apartment developments. Of particular note is the green space objective, which will encourage the provision of canopy trees within a development primarily along the frontage. If this will add to the landscape and is consistent with, um, as I mentioned, the urban forest strategy, which we've, uh, adopted. Now, the, uh, just to say that clearly this is not to be, um, confused with this is a planning matter and not to be confused with a building matter in relation to external cladding, uh, that's building and that is state government. This is very much, uh, while it's a state government, uh, policy, it is a planning policy which relates to landscaping, the improvements and the appearance of apartments. And right since getting on council, all of us have been very keen to see, um, an improvement in the appearance of apartments. So in that regard, I strongly support the, uh, the submission as prepared by our officers and and recommend the, the recommendation as put forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Langishy. With the second I'd like to speak, Council Alan.
Just that he's covered it all. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Council Alan. Council, is there any further discussion on this item? Council Headich?
Just to support what Council Langishy has said, but also to say how, how much needed this particular piece of policy work is. And particularly here in Brimbank and around the west here, we have a number of, I guess, issues that we can see in our own neighbourhoods with, I guess, green space and appearances of buildings in certain places that haven't been done to a standard that most people would consider acceptable. So I welcome the submission that's been put forward by the officers and I commend it to council.
Thank you, Council Headich. Any further discussion, councillors? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Thank you. Okay, we are now moving on to report twelve point seven, which is the Draft Report Card eighteen nineteen, Community Safety Strategy two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and nineteen. And I will ask Mr Hogan to introduce the report.
Thank you. As noted within the report, the current community safety strategy, twenty fifteen to twenty nineteen, was adopted by council at the ordinary council meeting on fifteenth of December two thousand and fifteen. The strategy outlines council's plan for building a safe, healthy and connected community. The strategy identifies four priority areas for action: injury prevention, particularly on roads and paths, crime prevention, incorporating crimes against a person, crimes against property and crimes perpetrated against women and children, alcohol and other drugs, and community in place, improving perceptions of safety in public areas. The report card at attachment one reports back to council the progress of council in implementing the actions of the strategy. It is the final annual report card of the four-year strategy that is now due for update. Further and lastly, I draw the attention of councillors to page two of the attachment in which officers will update all references to violence against women to include children as stated in the paragraph under crime prevention prior to the final production of the report card.
Thank you, Mr Hogan. Council, is there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Is there a motion, councillors? Council Papafodio?
As printed per the papers, please.
Thank you. Moved by Councilor Papafodios per the papers, seconded by Councilor Borg. And would the move like to speak to this item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The current community safety strategy outlines council's plan for building a safe, healthy and connected community. It expires in two thousand and nineteen. Community safety is a shared responsibility across all levels of government, law enforcement, service providers, stakeholders and the local community. Council plays a critical leadership role in identifying and responding to local community safety issues and referring to responsible authorities for action. The current strategy focuses heavily on physical environments, including roads, footpaths and lighting, and also crime prevention. However, what is meant by community safety continues to evolve. October is Community Safety Month and council supports this through supporting VicPole to, to deliver various Coffee with Cops sessions at different shopping centres, partner with youth services to deliver car restraint fitting checks at various different sites, support Sunshine Marketplace to deliver Community Safety Day family event, and also partner with youth services to deliver a youth engagement activity at Sunshine Station. So I highly recommend this report. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Papafodio. And Council Borg, would you like to speak as the second?
Yes, Madam Mayor. In addition to what Council Papafodio said, I would like to highlight some of the actions that council is taking with regards to safety. Council is working with its partners and the broader community to build a safe, healthy and connected Brimbank community. Council also engages young people with activities in various locations across Brimbank. Partnered with Wyndham and Menton Council to scope a coordinated outreach approach to engage young people in the west. Council also commissioned and endorsed a youth centre visibility study report and commenced development of a co-design implementation plan. And it also was working at increasing positive perceptions of safety in public places through community connections and pride, place activation and quality urban environments. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Borg. Council, is there any further discussion on this item? Council Judy Chair?
Just a question, Madam Mayor. The strategy finishes this year. We are about to begin a newer.
Mr Walsh? Mr Hogan?
Thank you. Through the chair, yes, that is correct. And in fact, the opening of the strategy was discussed at the last Healthy Brimbank Portfolio meeting, which I believe Council Papafodio was chair.
I'm sorry if I missed that, Council Papafodio. Okay, thank you. I wish to commend the report to council, Madam Mayor. It is an important strategy. And I wish to congratulate everyone in the implementation of this strategy over the last three years. It's been an enormous amount of work. We certainly look forward to implementing the next one as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Judy Chair. Council, is there any further discussion? Council Trung?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess would like to add some more with other council. Council already mentioned at the chair for the safety round table, I guess would like to announce it's like lots of current membership in lost the presidency from the council, state government, Victoria Police, Bramston, Western Health and Level Hope House, and also the member in the community get involved. If you be aware, you will see now regularly every day, the police is patrol is around in Sunshine Station. And also, we, the police, it will be patrol is around Sunshine and St Albans. In carry, also we're planning to install CCTV for the safety, especially in Sunshine Station because task is being, it's high right, it's recommend by the member in the community. And the police is also to do with a lot of presentation for the member in the community, ethnic community regard about the safety for home and in the public. So I recommend if other member in the community, if you need the police to call to come to do the presentation, so we can contact it all around the city of Brimbank. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Trung. Council, is there any further discussion on this item? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we're now going to move on to report twelve point eight, which is the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen Community Report Card on Brimbank Plan to Prevent Men's Violence Against Women Towards Gender Equality two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and nineteen. And I will ask Mr Hogan to choose that report.
Thank you. The Plan to Prevent Men's Violence Against Women Towards Gender Equality Strategy was adopted in two thousand and fifteen for a four-year period elapsing this year, two thousand and nineteen. The report card at attachment one reports back to council the progress of council in implementing the actions of the strategy. Again, it is the last annual action, sorry, annual report card of a four-year strategy which has been superseded by the Fairness, Equality and Respect Strategy of two thousand and nineteen to two, twenty twenty-three, which was adopted by this council in February of this year. The new strategy includes a preamble condemning all forms of violence against all peoples, while also furthering many of the guiding principles and actions identified in the draft report card for which council is asked to note this evening.
Thank you, Mr Hogan. Council, is there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Council, is there a motion for this item? Council Papafodio?
As per the business papers, thank you.
Thank you, and seconded by Council Borg. And Council Papafodio, would you like to speak on this item?
I think Dan has said it all. I just want to add that council has and will continue to advocate to state and federal government to seek to address the underlying causes of violence against women and children and promote gender equity. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Papafodio. Council Borg, would you like to speak on this item?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Going through the report card, it is impressive to see how much work council is doing in this area, including undertaking strategic advocacy at local, state and Commonwealth levels that supports and promotes gender equality and the prevention of violence against women, undertaking research, monitoring, evaluation of policy and programs to ensure continuous improvements, the promotion of an organized organizational culture that is welcoming, inclusive and respectful of women and supports women's leadership at all levels. And another important highlight is the development of the Fairness, Equality and Respect Strategy two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty-three. The strategy outlines a whole of council's approach to approach to promote gender equality and respectful relationships and prevent family violence and violence against women. The strategy was adopted by council in February two thousand and nineteen. I commend this report to council.
Thank you, Council Borg. Council, is there any further discussion? Council Headich?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I support all that's been said before me. I also wanted to congratulate Brimbank Council for all the work it's been doing on preventing men's violence against women and towards gender equality. They are both massive issues for this community. And it's great to see the work that council has done over, over a number of years in the report card that's before us tonight. I think men in this community, we have a fairly poor set of data for Brimbank. Men in this community need to stand up and speak out and act. It's mainly a men's problem, but we need to do it with women. We need to do it with interventions and plans for action that are signed off quality assured by women. So I'd like to commend the report to councillors. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Headich. Any further discussion? Council Judy Chair?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's another quality report card with over forty actions outlined in the attachment. So represents an enormous amount of work that this council has done. And I'm sure that we will continue to advocate to state and federal and any other agency which may assist us in this very important strategy. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Judy Chair. Council, is there any further discussion on this item? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we're moving on to report twelve point nine, which is of particular importance to me, not importance, but it's near and dear to my heart. And that is the Draft Deer Park Rail Corridor Urban Design Principles. And I'll ask Mr Whiteside to introduce this report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In November two thousand and eighteen, the Premier of Victoria committed to the removal of the three-level crossing in Brimbank along the Ballarat Rail Line. Council officers have prepared urban design principles to guide the design and the delivery of the level crossing removals on the Ballarat Line through our deer and deer park. And if adopted, would be used to inform all discussions with the state government concerning the planning, design and delivery of the level crossing removal projects and the station upgrades. This report is for council to consider endorsing the draft Deer Park Rail Corridor Urban Design Principles for community consultation for a four-week period. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Whiteside. Council, is there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Is there a mover of the item? Council David? Thank you, Council David. Moving as per the business papers, seconded by Councilor Fam. And Councilor David, would you like to speak to this item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In November two thousand and eighteen, council was pleased to learn of the announcement of the three crossings of Mount Derryman Road, Robinsons Road and Deer Park and Fisher Road in Adia to be removed along the Geelong and Ballarat Lines. The removal will also mean the construction of a new Deer Park Station. As we know, from our strong advocacy, advocacy in work around this issue, having boom gates down for up to forty-five percent of morning peak rush creates havoc and dangerous and high-risk behaviours. From both, and we've seen that personally, Madam Mayor, sometime during June, I remember, a very chilly morning, we all went there with our offices and other councillors and it was terrible. The removals are a welcome news for Brimbank. The draft Deer Park Corridor Urban Design Principles will be used by council to inform all discussions with the state government concerning the planning, design and delivery of the level crossing removals project and station, station upgrades. The ten comprehensive urban design principles are proposed which include engaging with community through consultation as part of the decision-making process and to maximize community connectivity across the corridor. Priority for safety is important as it creates a sense of place for the local community. Design must, must be high-quality and be respectful, respectful to the culture and natural and built heritage. I'm also pleased to know the priority of walking, cycling and public transport access station along and along the corridor of with clear and direct pedestrian movement between transport modes. This is a significant and exciting project, Madam Mayor, and I commend that this report to the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Council David. Council Fam, would you like to speak to this item? No? Council, is there any further discussion? Council Judy Chair?
Yes, Madam Mayor. This report actually does highlight an example of a success in advocacy. Whereas despite the freezing morning conditions where a few councillors and officers went out and and saw firsthand exactly what that congestion was all about, we're very happy, of course, that with the election, the state government did come along. So I would urge all the residents to become informed of these urban design principles and of course, give us any feedback that is required from their point of view. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Judy Chair. Council, is there any further discussion on this item? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Thank you. Okay, we're now moving on to report twelve point ten, which is the Review of the Sale of Surplus Land Policy two thousand and nineteen. And I will ask Mr Whiteside to introduce this report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This report is for council to consider the review of the current sale of surplus land policy two thousand and nineteen and consider options to amend the current policy to one that will consider the facilitation of the sale of surplus land to a third party to accommodate other social benefit outcomes such as social housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Whiteside. Council, is there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Is there a motion, councillors? Council Langishy?
Through you, Madam Mayor. I move the officer's recommendation.
Thank you, Council Langishy. Is there a second? Seconded by Council Judy Chair. And would the move like to speak to this item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Sale of Surplus Land Policy is our current policy. The review investigated the concept of the sale of surplus land to a third party to accommodate other social benefit outcomes other than those already included in the current policy. What was being raised for a review was the concept of using these sites for public housing, community housing and affordable housing. The current policy gives council and our ratepayers the best possible return on the sale of this surplus land. The problems with using the sale of surplus land for public, community and affordable housing are many. Can you imagine a vacant block next to you where you live suddenly being made available for tiny houses or social housing? My experience in local government elsewhere is that doing this creates real problems and very angry neighbours. The blocks for sale are not chosen, they come up in random locations. These locations may not be appropriate for either social, community or affordable housing. They might come up for a number of reasons such as someone not paying their rates over a prolonged period of time. Social, community and affordable housing should be located near social infrastructure, jobs, public transport, retail such as in and around Sunshine. I would like to thank the staff for their diligent work in undertaking this review and accordingly support the officer recommendation. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council Langishy. And with the second I'd like to speak, Council Judy Chair?
Just simply to say, Madam Mayor, that this policy is actually the second time that it's come to council in two thousand and nineteen. It was adopted by council in February and it's now been reviewed once again. And I'm quite satisfied with the analysis that the officers have provided in this report. And I will be supporting the recommendation.
Thank you, Council Judy Chair. Is there any further discussion on this item? Council Headich?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I stand to speak against this particular one, as most people know. Uh this review came forward when we were looking at selling a block of land in North Sunshine. North Sunshine, as we know, has a open space deficit. We also know that this is a community-first council, not a budget-first council. We know that there can be great community value achieved through a combination of economic, social and environmental benefits coming together to create value. Uh in this particular case, Brimbank uh has a social justice charter that it prides itself on. We pride ourselves on looking at the needs of those most disadvantaged. Question, are we living it? Brimbank's a high-needs area, high disability, high levels of disability, high levels of homeless homelessness and high levels of poverty. We have open space deficits, particularly in North Sunshine Albion and Central Sunshine. Many organisations are trying to buy and build local accommodation for local people with disabilities or living in poverty. Brimbank has little surplus land left. Simply sized blocks a thousand metres and more are highly valued by these organisations to make local accommodation available to local people. Many people are are looking for council to take up a role in this space. I think there's a whole conversation needed about that, but not tonight. I spoke to the mayor of another council today and she asked why is council selling land? Uh we- we- they have open space deficits, so do we. They have high social needs, so do we. They are selling airspace to uh social housing organisations to put social housing in place above car parks. I also spoke to Department of Treasury and Finance, who said uh they think that um one of the models that they use to sell land to local councils and to state departments could be modified to be put in place at local level. I spoke to the M A V today and uh they say that a lot of councils are interested in this space and doing things in a council role to make life better for local people in their local communities. So for me, I say that option two is poorly underdeveloped. It needs a lot more work and that we're considering a paper here tonight that should be deferred and considered later. I leave it at that. When we are in a community where there is an open space deficit. I leave that to councillors to decide.
Thank you, Council Headich. Councilors, any further discussion on this item? No? Council Lancashire, is the move of the item. Would you have the right of reply?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a very brief one. I commend Councilor Headich's interest in uh social, community and affordable housing. Would say that we all definitely um share that interest with him as well. Um and sorry?
Point of order. Thank you, Council Headich.
Point of order taken. Um and uh I I think in terms of that, uh would welcome um further down the track that we have some further discussion as councillors on this very important issue. Uh I just don't believe um from my experience that this is the right way to actually achieve that problem. Uh there are better ways. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council Lancashire. Councilors, uh that concludes the debate. So I will put the item to the vote. All those in favour? All those against? Carried. Councilor, councillors, Council Headich has called for a division. I will ask for the vote again and ask everybody to stand when uh when the vote is called until I read your name and then your name will be recorded in the minutes. So all those in favour, please stand. Council Congreve, Council Fam, Council Lancashire, Council David, Council Trung, Council Allen, Council Borg, Council Judy Chair, Council Papafodio. All those against, please stand. Council Headich? The vote is carried. The motion is carried. Thank you. Okay, that concludes our officer reports for this evening. I'm going to move on to item number thirteen, which is notices of motion, and there are no notice of motions this evening. I'm now going to move on to item number fourteen, which is rescission motions. And there is a rescission motion this evening and it is listed in tonight's agenda, councillors. So can I please remind you that this rescission motion relates to a confidential report? We are unable to discuss the subject matter of the report at this stage of the meeting, nor the location of the report or any further details of that matter. So I will ask, um do we have the rescission motion, Council Headich? Would you like to move your motion?
Same move as per the business papers.
Thank you, Council Headich. And is there a second up for this item? Seconded by Council David. Uh Council Headich, would you like to speak to this item?
I certainly would, Madam Mayor. Uh this particular
Madam Mayor, may I ask that the question be put, please?
Um you can ask that, but we haven't had any debate yet, so I'm not going to accept a put motion or two of at least heard some debate. Thank you, Council Judy Chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh I I stand tonight to uh talk to uh a decision we made in confidence uh a few days back. Uh as councillors know, the uh particular uh project uh was a project of the highest community priority.
Council Headich, I'm sorry, you're not able to refer to the project in any detail.
Uh Madam Mayor, I I was advised that I could speak in generality, as long as I did not talk about names or places or anything like
That is too specific.
And a project being the highest community priority doesn't give it any
Okay. Council Headich, I'm sorry. I needed to be more general than that and not refer to the item at all. Perhaps you could talk about why the rescission motion is important, but the words that you're using now would be reasonable to assume that a community member could work out exactly what you're talking about.
Right. Well, uh good luck to them. But anyhow, I'll keep going. The um the initiative is uh one of high community value. Uh Victorian Government uh has supported it previously.
Council Headich, I'm going to put the motion. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I ask that the question be put, please.
Okay, I'm going to put the motion, councillors.
Uh I have not said anything out of order here.
Sorry, Council Headich. Council Headich?
Not one.
As the chair of the meeting, this it's it is my decision as to whether or not the motion is put.
That is totally
Can I please ask you to sit down and we are going to put a vote?
Badly disadvantaged by this.
Thank you, Council Headich. Councilors, I will put the motion to the vote and end the debate. So um the the motion on the table is a rescission motion for the confidential property matter. Um I will ask all those in favour of the rescission motion to please, um all those in favour to vote now, please. All those in favour of the rescission motion? All those against? The motion is lost. Thank you, councillors.
Our request for a division, please.
Thank you, Council Papafodio. Council Papafodio has asked for a division, so I will call the vote again. And when I ask for your vote, can I ask you to please stand so that your vote is recorded in the minute? So all those in favour, please stand. All those in favour of the rescission motion, please stand. Yes. So Council David and Council Headich. Thank you. All those against the rescission motion, please stand. Council Congreve, Council Fam, Council Trung, Council Allen, Council Borg, Council Judy Chair and Council Papafodio. Thank you. The motion is lost. Okay, so councillors, this means that confidential report sixteen point two will not be considered by council and the resolutions of the special council meeting last week are upheld. So we're now moving on to item number fifteen of the agenda and that is in relation to urgent business. And CEO, is there any urgent businesses this evening? No. The CEO has advised there is no urgent business, so we move on to item number sixteen, which is confidential business. And may I have a mover of a motion to close the meeting to the members of the public for the consideration of item sixteen point one, which has been designated as confidential? Moved to Council Judy Chair, seconded by Council Papafodio. All those in favour? Carried. Thank you. So this meeting is now closed to members of the public at eight eighteen P M. Thank you, everybody, for your patience. Councilors considered the confidential items and resolved that they may remain confidential at this stage. So I'd like to thank everybody for their interest in this evening's proceedings and I now declare this meeting closed at eight thirty P M. Thank you.